Welcome to the September 25, 2024 Selectmen's Meeting. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings SLS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Please join us and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you. Before we begin, do we have any announcements today?
I have one. Just informing the public again that there will be a Public Safety Day on the 6th of October from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Community Center. Please come on out, rest here with wonderful, and hope you enjoy the time there and understand what our public safety folks do through here and around the campus.
Thank you, John. Anybody else?
I have one announcement from the library. There's going to be a butacular candy and costume event on October 24th from 4:00 to 5:30. There'll be trick-or-treating, face painting, balloons, a clown, and it's actually going to be held between the library and the Council on Aging, and the kids can travel between the two. And that is everything. Our first board action item is we have Paul from Old Colony here to do a presentation on our green communities. May I step up, Paul? Thank you for coming. It's on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. Appreciate your time. I am here on behalf of Old Colony Planner Council as their Senior Grants Development Specialist. And as part of a regional energy planning assistance grant, completely free, done through the Department of Energy Resources, we provide administrative assistance to you all. That is in the form of annual reports, annual report presentations, like the one you'll see tonight. We do your final reports, and we also help you with the grant applications. So I'm the one that's going to be coordinating all that for you guys going forward. So each year, as part of the REAPER grant, we put on these presentations. So I just wanted to give you an update on how you're doing. As you all may be aware, in order to become a green community, there's five designation criteria that need it to be. And of course, to maintain green community status, you need to maintain the five criteria moving forward, and as long as you continue to apply for grants. So the report is done on an unusual basis, so we're going to be looking at fiscal '23, so it's a couple of years behind. That's how DOER works when it comes to these. So next year, it'll be '24, and so on, and so on. So your baseline year was 2013, so that was the year you were designated. As we look at the five criteria, the first one is related to hazard right setting. So when you became designated, you had a choice of three options. So renewable, alternative energy generating facilities, renewable, alternative energy resource, excuse me, research and development facilities, or renewable and alternative energy manufacturing facilities. So you maintain compliance as it relates to criteria one, and selected solar PV as it relates to hazard right setting. I just wanted to put a zoning map up there for you guys to take a look at. The second criteria is related to expedited permitting. So from the date of the initial application to the date of final approval is done in 12 months. It's typically done in two ways, through local rules and regulations, and the second is through MGL C403D permitting. A majority of the communities in our region do it through local rules and regulations, and the same applies for the town of Pembroke. What I like to think of as the most important criteria is related to energy and showing what your energy use has been. So in order to maintain green community status, within five years of designation, you have to at least be 20% below what your baseline levels are. So as you can see here, as it relates to buildings, open space, street and traffic lights, your vehicles and water and sewer, some good, some bad, I will say, just looking at the data. So your building energy use has gone down slightly. Everything else is up slightly. Overall, energy use is up 4.4%. My goal is to continue to work with you all to work on more projects, to hopefully continue to improve upon that. So as you look at some of the projects that you all have worked on over the years, that at least have it in my records, are the following. So you've done a Pembroke Library weatherization project. You've done the Habermock Elementary School weatherization projects. You've done some LED lighting in your high school. You've done a transformer replacement at the ball field at Medicae Set. And then you've also done some town hall weatherization. So those are some of the projects that you've done currently. As we think about some of the buildings that are causing the greatest energy use, here's a list of some of the top five. So your high school's one of the top energy users overall, followed by your North Pembroke Elementary, followed by Bryantville Elementary, Habermock, and then the Community Middle No surprise, those are also the highest emission buildings. So your high school, your elementary school, Bryantville, Habermock, and then the Community Middle School as well.
Is that common for schools?
And then last but not least is your highest energy use intensity. So this is basically your energy use divided by your building square footage. So think of it as like your miles per gallon, if you will. So the highest gas guzzler, so to speak, is the Pembroke Recycling Center, followed by the tree department, and then Lydia Drake Library, the fire main station, 168, and then your police station. Criterion four relates to your vehicle policy. So as required by green communities, you want to think about as you're retiring some vehicles in your fleet and putting new ones on the board that they're energy efficient, right? Either battery electric vehicles or hybrid. You guys have done great with that, so there have been no reports of any violations related to the policy. So that's great. And then last but not least is your stretch code compliance. This is the three criterias that relate to the stretch code, and there's been no reported violations as it relates to the stretch code. And then, again, the highlights are you're doing okay when it comes to energy use in your buildings, but overall energy use, again, is up around 4.4% based on the baseline year And of course, with green communities, the possibilities are endless, right? Again, my goal is to continue to work with you all to bring in more funding and, of course, see those numbers go down. So you guys actually just have completed a set of grants, so I'm working on your final report right now. So once I'm completed with that and it's submitted to DOER, you'll be eligible in the spring of 2025 for ongoing funding. So that means grants up to $225,000 minimally. If you're an environmental justice community, you're eligible for grants in the amount of $250,000. And then finally, if you're doing a decarbonization-related grant, you can apply for up to $500,000 in funding. If you are an environmental justice community, the match with that would be 10%, and if you are not, it would be 25%. And then I did want to mention one more program that's new that your regional coordinator, Lisa Sullivan, provided to me. So this is what they're considering, the Green Communities 2.0 program. So in order to be eligible for this, it's very similar to the eligibility now. So you must be in good standing as a green community, establish a local advisory committee to coordinate clean energy and climate activities, commit to decarbonization by 2025. Again, similarly, have a vehicle, battery electric vehicle, hybrid vehicle first policy, continue with your stretch code adoption, and just make sure you're demonstrating good practice. So unfortunately, I don't have any more information other than what you see here, but happy to reach out to Lisa Sullivan to provide any more information on any questions that you may have as it relates to this. And of course, lastly, is the contact information for all the regional coordinators in Massachusetts, but you guys will be dealing with Lisa Sullivan. And so with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. If it's them, to the best of my knowledge, and if I can't answer them, I'll relay them to Lisa for further information or clarification.
Can you send us a report these slides?
Absolutely.
What is environmental justice?
So environmental justice is, it's basically a set of criteria that both the federal government and the state have designated for certain communities. So it's basically if you meet a certain income threshold, there's a whole set of criteria that you have to meet related to income, area median income, minority, population is minority, et cetera. So there are...
You're not...
Yes, Pembroke is not an environmental justice community. But if you were, there's additional incentives that you wouldn't be eligible for as it relates to green communities, but also a whole host of different grants available through the state or federal level.
The environmental justice component there, is that just for those last few grants that you are referencing, or is that for in general to be a green community?
Just for those.
Just the class. So there are other ones that we qualify, even though those ones currently...
Correct.
The green designation allows us to qualify for some of these grants.
Correct.
So do you ever suggest, does Old Colony ever suggest projects for us to take on that would...
Absolutely, yeah. So when you became a green community, developed an energy reduction plan. So typically, what we do is we look at the recommendations within the energy reduction plan, obviously look at those high energy use facilities, and see what the need is within that particular building. So we do that pre-application process. You then reach out to your energy service provider. They provide the data to me, and then I basically put that within the application, obviously send it as a draft back over to the town for review, and then once everything looks good and is agreed upon, then that gets sent to DOER as part of the application process.
And I guess my other question is, how is Lydia Drake on that list?
We own it.
I know, but the top five, I was surprised to see a top five.
I was too.
Lydia Drake is a little...
Top five of energy, though.
Of energy. Can you go back a couple...
It's a percentage of the square footage.
Oh, it just seems like a lot of building to be there.
The recycle center square footage isn't right, so it's...
Oh, okay.
You know, it's...
It just seemed like an odd building to be on that list, I guess.
Do the math all the way through.
So think about the recycling center for a second. It's very tiny footprint, plus we have the compactor, we have equipment there, so...
What do we have with Lydia Drake that I do?
So should we forward this to the school committee to look at...
Well, I talk with her on a regular basis.
Does she know that all of our buildings are the top five?
They always are.
That's what they say.
Every school and every community is that.
It's not really in our wheelhouse, though. It's more them.
It is, it is. And we, you know, we work with her on the green communities on a regular basis, a lot of the programs we do, like this year, Habermock, we did the library in Habermock as...
Weatherization.
Weatherization. I was going to say insulation, but weatherization, we massively...
We've had years where all three or four projects are in the school.
Yeah, the majority of them.
They're targeting where the...
So they're well aware of it.
That's expected.
Yeah, but it's just the nature of the school system. You just, they're just so large, those buildings, you just can't do anything.
I agree. So, okay, to me, that begs the, that begs the question. So if, generally speaking, all the towns, you always have town cities, you have the school buildings be the by far largest consumers of energy, and, you know, you've worked some with some of these towns and whatnot, what have you found have been the biggest opportunities within the schools to reduce energy usage productively?
Productively, I'd say LED lighting, for sure.
We've done it, so we're done with that.
We already did that.
Yes.
What would be next?
Typically, weatherizations.
Okay, and then after that?
And we're doing weather, we haven't done all weatherizations. We're in that process now.
We're in that process. All right, one more.
So probably you're, look at your boiler systems, right, to see if there is an energy-efficient HVAC system that can be installed to reduce some of that energy use.
And so we're also doing that. The schools have a significant amount of cash to upgrade the HVAC systems in the rooftop units, and we're doing it with the Pembroke Library, updating those. So we're getting it. We're certainly on the list of making sure that we follow through with this.
What about our electricity bill? A lot of the lights that we have on our poles are not LED. What are the opportunities there?
So we don't own those. There are opportunities. We continually try to work with National Grid on that. I'm going to be following up relatively quickly on that. I have recently, as Sabrina knows, found some super LEDs that are incredibly inexpensive, and so I'm going to be working with them. But we don't own those, and the challenge there is they really want the municipalities to buy them. I can't afford them.
To pay for, to pay for the light, not just the hardware, but also the installation? So we would fully own that whole change out?
Correct.
And yet not own the asset.
Right.
So it's like... So it's like, so that's a challenge. I did it in Ag. I would not recommend we go there. You know, they have certain responsibilities through Green Communities as one of theirs, also through the state and DBU as a replacement of the old metal halide, mercury, sodium lights, two LEDs. But when you say that, you know, and they have followed through in that, but it's not an incentive for them to do it.
No, definitely not, because you pay them more money, so why would...
And you've built just replaced all of the ones at basketball court. It's only been a few weeks.
On the town side, we're working on our parking lots and that type of stuff, wall packs, you know, load us up after we did it. You know, we're working through that, but we don't own that infrastructure as National Grid, so...
So then, like, the Green Communities, one final thing, sorry. But as the Green Communities grant specialist for Old Colony Planning Council, are you aware of any state, federal, or private grants available to help towns migrate over to LEDs, considering the kind of incentive structures that are in place that make that difficult?
Certainly something I can look into. I can't think of one off the top, but definitely will reach out to you guys and let you know. Just to clarify on the LEDs, so through Green Communities, LED lighting replacement is only for schools, so you're not, actually not allowed to do it for the municipal buildings.
Oh, okay.
But these are LEDs. I believe, I believe we did an LED project in this...
And we did them for Green Communities years ago.
Years ago. That has changed. They're walking away from LEDs. They're actually going to be very quickly, the rumor mill, I don't think it's a rumor, I think it's out there already, they're going to be walking away from school LED projects.
Why is that?
They're, a lot of them are done, and they're also looking to push people in other directions. You know, they found that waterization is better, some of the HVAC, some of the water projects are better. You know, certainly the vehicle projects and their electric car charging stations. One of the reasons we're so good is we don't own a lot of cars other than our public safety. And if you look around, we don't drive, this community doesn't have vehicles other than our public safety departments.
But they're doing away with LED light.
They're doing away with incentives for LED.
I mean, do you not want them used, utilized anymore?
Well, that's not him.
That's...
That's...
That's the...
That's the...
Not liberals.
So I can explain. They're pushing you away from LED funding because they want you to go deeper and deeper. They want you to turn over your entire boiler systems to more efficient systems, and if they keep giving these little drips of LED lighting, they're afraid that people won't get the message to take this big chunk that's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, which they will. You know, to do a boiler system in the school is a couple hundred grand.
Sure.
You know, so that's why we say, well, let's do the LED lighting. You know, it's only going to cost us 30 grand. Because that's not cheap either. But it's the hundreds of thousands of dollar projects is what the larger entity that's running this wants you to do. Not him. Not him.
He's only the best...
The larger entity.
Beyond you. How old are our boilers in schools, do you know?
I don't have a good inventory of school stuff. I could ask, and she'll share that.
I'm curious.
The boilers on the town side, with the exception of our buildings, are in relatively good shape, have a long useful life left, and are pretty efficient. Now, having said that, the boiler at the police station, the boiler at the fire station, the boiler at Bryantville Fire Station, food pantry, we're actually in the process of working to upgrade that. So those are not efficient, but why would I put boilers in there that's not going to use in three years?
And they want them all electric.
Yeah.
They eliminate any gas or fuel.
Electrification is a...
And that's...
People are regretting that residential-wise.
Well, that's the push throughout the country. You know, as a builder, that the new energy code that came out...
Stretch code's coming up.
Not just the stretch code, the new code itself requires all the buildings to be essentially passive house. And what passive house means is super insulated, all-electric. And that's for commercial buildings as well as residential.
That's why it's less affordable, more and more.
Well, it's expensive, and, you know, advocates will say that, yes, it has a cost, but it also has wide benefits too. So I've heard arguments for both sides. I did have a question though. So we've heard the data, the data on Pembroke. How does our community compare to other light communities for energy usage? It varies, honestly. Every community has their own, you know, in terms of meeting the baseline goals, some have exceeded, beyond expectations, some still need a little work. So it kind of varies. There isn't sort of a one size fits all when it comes to this. But the ultimate goal at the end of the day is to continue to work with all of our communities to invest in the projects that, again, are at no cost because it's a program that's, you know, provided through DOE R.
Okay, well, can I go upon your... Okay, well, if I'm correct on just what Mr. Chibuko was saying, we're comparing our, we're trying to compare ourselves to folks on the South Shore, our neighbors. So how do we compare an energy efficiency to our neighbors?
It's how we're placed.
Well, no, exactly. But, you know, if we're doing well by it, we've been a Green Community since 2013, so it's been over a decade. You know, I mean, how have we progressed in over 10 years and compare it to our neighbors who are also Green Communities? I know that Duxbury is one of them, you know, and you see the signs all about. So like I said, I just want to know how we compare on basically our energy efficiency to them.
Well, to be honest, I haven't done that analysis, so I don't have a...
You're not helping here.
Concrete answer on that, but I, certainly something I can look into and get to.
Appreciate that.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
I would just, just one comment. If you go back to 2013, doing analysis of our energy production, we've done very well. Recent years, because we've done those projects early on, we were one of the earlier community business of the Green Communities, we have done it as well, and part of that is environmental, part of that is just, you know, those old buildings I named are struggling. And if you've ever been in Lydia Drake, go visit it. It's a beautiful building, but it's not insulated. And the boiler's older. Well, it's not that old, actually. Yeah.
It's very...
It's everything else that needs to be...
Yeah, it's everything else.
I think I did see on the chart that in the last few years, in terms of versus the baseline, we had dropped only 4% above the baseline. We were significantly more than that just a few years ago.
Well, we're doing fine. I mean, from 13 and now, we're doing well.
It's good to note the trend, which at that rate, obviously, past does not dictate future, but at that rate, next year or the year after, we could be negative, though not 20% below.
We're going to get to a point where it plateaus that.
Of course, yeah.
Absolutely. I didn't want, I didn't mean to say that, you know, that this is a negative. It's not. It's just, I would say, just pointing out the data that's provided through Mass Energy Insights, so while anything that's put in related to National Grid ever source goes to that program, it's provided into your annual report, and this is the data that gets provided.
Well, if we end up having to redistrict our schools, that would be one school that would be more electricity usage. Not saying that will happen, but...
Your 2017, Habermock or what?
We're not saying anything.
We're not having such a discussion tonight.
I don't, that is way out of my line. I do not go near that. I leave that up to the experts who reside on the other side of town and meet at North Pembroke Elementary on a regular basis.
Does anyone have anything further for Paul?
No.
Paul, thank you for coming. Could you mind forwarding the slides to Sabrina so we could look at them too?
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You as well.
All right, moving on. Vote to accept resignation of Charles Marshall from Recycling and Sustainability Committee.
So...
Second.
The motion of a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote to accept minutes of September 11th and September 18th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consider recommendation to vote to appoint Lisa Chapman of 61 Little's Ave to Cultural Council.
I would move to appoint Lisa Chapman to the Pembroke Cultural Council, first term to expire 2027.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion and possible vote on policy process are Camp Pembroke fund applications. So I just wrote up some information that I thought you might want to discuss on creating some sort of guardrails around Camp Pembroke, and that you all have it. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it or not yet. Do you want me to just read this out loud, and then we can just kind of go from there?
Yeah.
I personally think we should create some sort of application program or process. So what I wrote is, "Community fund grant application. Each year, the town or select board is committed to granting or donating up to 25% of the current fund to a cause or event that benefits the community as a whole. Priority shall be given to applicants who have not received funding in prior years, but all decisions remain at the discretion of the select board. We encourage applications from individuals and organizations dedicated to making a positive impact in our community." My suggested application questions in general, I'm sure we could add something more, would be to, one, please provide a brief introduction of yourself and your organization if applicable. Two, is your organization a registered 501(c)(3) entity? Three, describe your program, project, or event. Four, how will this initiative benefit our community? Five, what amount of funding are you requesting? Six, how will the donated funds be utilized? And seven, what other sources of funding do you have? And then, of course, the typical contact information, et cetera. I just think that this comes before us pretty commonly and often comes with a little bit of drama and questions on how we handle the fund, or what it's for, or what we should use it for. And I think that we need to have something in writing, if it's not an official policy, some sort of guidelines. We're not always going to be the ones that are here as well, so... Plus, I think it's a nice thing to do, to commit to some sort of, a percentage actually is nicer than having a dollar amount. We never know what we're going to have in this account. We don't know if they're, we're going to be donated to next year, it could disappear. So a percentage pretty much works with what's in there, so we're not completely abolishing our account. And it still gives us the opportunity as a board to donate something to the community that's giving back to the community. So I just, I think we need something in writing, moving on, so we don't have to do this every year.
Yeah, I mean, personally, this is, I think the spirit of this is excellent, in my opinion. This is kind of what I was hoping for, is some kind of a transparent framework around, framework and guideline that is not too rigid of a system, because you really need flexibility. You need to really be able to exercise judgment, so I think that that's really important. But I think having a, you know, having some kind of framework guideline that sets clearer expectations, mitigates potential political influences in decision-making, and being inspired by a kind of grant process, I think is excellent. So in terms of the spirit towards that, those are my kind of high-level thoughts on it. Other kind of thoughts that I have would be for contact information, you know, the, beyond just the name of the applicant, also the organization, if any, or the entity, whatever it is, a website and/or social media page, if any, that's associated with it. And, I mean, I agree, I think that it should be stated that there's, you know, priority or preference shall be given to applicants who have not received funding in prior years, but obviously, all decisions at the discretion of the board. A couple of things I would throw out there, and I'm curious what everybody else thinks, especially in the spirit of what Camp Pembroke themselves have said, which is their desire for it to be used towards beautification. I think that priority or preference, I should, I think it should be stated that priority or preference should be toward the creation and/or enhancement to it. It could only be that, but stating a preference. Like, I think seeing applications, seeing folks, organizations interested in doing something for the town that beautifies the town as an investment in some sort would be a particular benefit of that. But again, not restricting it, just adding that as a preference. And then one more thing, a priority or preference toward public town entities as well. So again, not necessarily restricting it to that, but saying, hey, you know, if a town entity or some, you know, commission or board, or like the schools or whatever, have something that they really want to bring to the board, then some kind of preference would be towards that as well, because the town, it would be, again, a town asset. So those are kind of my thoughts.
So...
That's what six actually says, how it's going to be utilized.
No, I was going to say, so I was thinking of the island program that hadn't begun yet. That would be something that would fall under the lines of beautification, town asset type of thing. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this?
I do.
Okay. Do share.
So I want you to take a step back and not think about this as a piggyback for the select board to plant flowers at islands and stuff. You also have to remember that the town manager needs this money sometimes, and he doesn't know when, and he doesn't know where, to just dole this money out because we have it, whether it's an application process or not. So we've never had a written policy on this. We've taken these projects up as they come, or the town manager, or previously the town administrator, would come to us and say, oh my goodness, this boiler blew, I need $20,000 right now to get it patched up. Where am I going to get this? I can't have a town meeting to get the funding. The advisory committee has already expended their $80,000 that they have, or is in a pinch for it. I need this other money. Where can I get it? A vote of the select board gives it to them through the Camp Pembroke Fund. So I understand how you'd love to use it for little pet projects everywhere and avoid the political discussion when so-and-so comes before us and we're embarrassed to say no, but sometimes you have to say no. That's all I have to say about that.
I think everything you've said is kind of in line with that.
Yes. Well, to Dan's, let's say I keep on piggybacking on you, you're killing me tonight.
No.
Well, basically, in the first paragraph itself, "Decisions remain discretion of the select board and recommendation of the town manager," should be added to that if it is a policy in and of itself, just as basically Dan was saying, they, he might need something for the town itself, this entity where we have the money, and thanks for Camp Pembroke for donating it for us to use in any way, shape, or form, to help us out here. And then during, for some of the questions here, we always got to make sure it says "our town," vaguely, but make sure it basically says "in Pembroke," because some of the stuff looks like any entity outside could actually come on in and say, ooh, you guys have money, we can come on in. They can't, because it's only for Pembroke stuff. And if it's an organization, for number two, an organization or a nonpartisan registered 501(c)(3) entity would work out well to make sure that the politics is totally out of it. Because, I mean, if you put it this way, the RNC and the DNC are nonprofits. So it's the whole thing, but they're political.
Right.
So you always have to worry about if you're buttoning it down, that's kind of where you have to go with it. Besides that, I'm okay with this.
Would you have thoughts, Rich, before I went to Bill?
I think I'd like to see their budget, you know, what they've raised thus far, what their goals are, what the expenditures are going towards. I'd be a little more curious to see that.
And did you have thoughts, Bill, that you'd like to share?
I think is important. We, not often, fortunately, but on occasion, we'll have a situation where we've got a capital appropriation for a town improvement. I'll use a playground as an example, because we actually had this situation. The bid's come in $1,000 high. Without a funding source, I can't award that bid. If I go back to the town meeting, I can do that, but I can't award that bid. I have to go back up to bid next year, who knows? It might be $2,000. This would be a perfect solution for that. The way we settled it before, we were able to find some money within a line item, but you're not going to be able to do that as budget. Yeah, I'm going to talk about that when I talk about the budget in town managers' updates. But as budgets get tighter, you just simply not going to be able to do that. So I would like to have that opportunity to come over to the board and say, hey, we're $500,000 off here. Can we use Camp Pembroke fund? You know, and a playground, I would, is a perfect example, because it's something that they would have, they would like to see. So I think that's a great idea.
I just want to piggyback on being in a tight financial situation. We've been there before, and to, for the previous presenter, we were talking about the streetlights, and it was '07 or so, the town was in dire straits. The governor had just pulled back funding mid-fiscal year, and every single city in town was struggling, and we were looking for ways to scrape up money. And one of the ways that we were looking to scrape up money was to shut off all the streetlights in town. Shut them off. Call up National Grid, shut them off to save the couple bucks a month we're paying for the electric bill. And we did a cost-benefit analysis on it. We found out that it would have cost the town more money to shut it off than to leave them running. But we were that strapped for cash that we were going to shut off the streetlights at town, except at dangerous intersections. So it's happened before, so we need to have the town manager to have the flexibility to have a kitty to go to without a town meeting. Because, think about it, even $1,000, if we don't have it in that fund, if the advisory committee doesn't have it in their reserve fund, we literally have to spend $15,000 to have a town meeting to appropriate $1,000. So, and we've been there before, and it could happen again, so let's be prudent.
Go ahead, Sabrina.
25% of the current fund. What does that mean? Annual receipts balance, but is it... You don't want to spend beyond 25% of the balance in the fund? Or the annual receipts?
So this wouldn't intend to take away from... Thank you.
I just...
I wrote that as balance, that's what I wrote it as, but...
Okay, so as the current fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. And just, if I may, just to be clear, if you spend 25% of the current balance, that current balance will come down with the town, because you're not replenishing it as quickly as you would be spending under that scenario.
I mean, I think it's worth noting that she put donating up to 25%. So for whatever reason, that could be one year, the select board decides 10% or...
It still remains the discretion of the board.
And I'm not... I think that's fine.
But that doesn't prevent you from taking from this account.
Well...
How so?
If we deplete it, then you have nothing to take. But if you spend 25% every year of the balance, and you're only getting $5,000 a year now, and that could change, so...
It was more of a cap. It was more of a cap, that we weren't donating out more than 25%.
No, I get it, I'm just...
As opposed to saying, hey, we have to donate 25% every year.
So there's a balance, there's a balance that you could have. If we want to have a written policy on how we do it for discretionary spending, that's fine. But I just caution you not to deplete the fund.
No, I don't want to see that, that's why I want this there. That's why I think we need something in writing. Last year, or two years ago, we gave $9,000 away. And not that it was necessarily wrong, but what's to stop future boards from depleting their account?
We currently haven't.
If we have no boundaries, 39,000?
Yeah, almost 40,000.
39,000?
I think, I think the language...
The language could certainly be tweaked.
I think the language overall is very flexible and accommodates...
And maybe 25% needs to be tweaked, but I don't... It's not intended to say that we need to give away 25% up to, capped. We shouldn't be giving more than that away. We still have people that come forward to ask for money, whether we have this in place or not.
I think it's a solid place to start, keeping in mind everything that we've discussed this evening. It gives you the discretion to take some action, but put some parameters for the applicants, so they know what they have to provide for.
Why don't we establish a reserve in there, and say, anything over 30,000?
I don't know if I want to use hard numbers.
Well, that gives Dan's idea...
And you can't allow it to go below a certain balance?
Well, no, if we keep 30,000 in there, and then anything above that for the next three years, we can give a percentage of that away, but that helps. Dan's idea with the town manager can have a slush fund if needed through us, and then also through the years, we can decide to donate some of that, not 30,000.
But I think that makes it complicated. Like, what do we donate each year then? And how do we know?
What do we get, 5,000 a year?
Kind of winging it? Well, it changes.
Yeah.
About five? So next year it'll be 35?
We don't know that, we can't assume.
Well, 34, 36, I mean, somewhere in there, right?
But it used to be nine, I think it used to be nine. Yeah, it's changed.
Oh, that was before the inflation, too.
I would just never assume that we were even going to get a donation.
And really, the only reason that I asked the question, Tracy, was so that if there were something that arose, Bill could look at the balance and already know what could be committed elsewhere, and nobody has available.
Well, I understand.
But also, in terms of like the whole question around like emergency, like emergency situations like that you mentioned, obviously, every town doesn't have a Camp Pembroke fund, this kind of fund situation. So we have emergency funds, stabilization funds, things like that. What do the towns use?
Near the town meeting to...
So in an emergency situation, what does Duckburg do?
Stabilization is a four-fifth vote, too, bring it out.
So what do the other towns do that don't have a Camp Pembroke fund in those situations?
Other towns do what I have been attempting to do with advisory, they have a much, much higher reserve fund. We have a $75,000 reserve fund, and I've been trying, it was much lower, I added 5,000 a year to try to get it up higher, you know, so that you... Something catastrophic happens here, that's it. Last year, we spent $75,000 on the frees at the high school. That, it's just one event, not that there weren't other events, other events, but we had to be creative and move money around. And as others have said, all those other funds are great, but you can't spend them without going to town meeting.
So the answer is the reserve fund?
Yeah, that's the answer.
And are we on a path to get to where you feel like we should be at? Are we driving towards that path?
Then it's shaking her head, no.
Are we putting a plan in place to get there?
We have a plan in place, but it's going to take multiple years to get there, because of our budget constraints.
But we're still on a... We still have a plan in place, and we're driving towards that.
Yeah, okay.
So if you were comfortable with something like this, what would you change in it to make it better?
Oh, you're going to put me at a spot.
Yes.
I just, I have a couple of notes to 501... The designation of, what is it?
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3). There are a lot of other organizations out there that aren't necessarily 501(c)(3).
Oh, I wasn't saying they need it to be.
Right. You know, are they? What were some of my other notes?
Right, I was just asking a question.
Do we think 25% is too high a percentage to cap that?
I don't, as long as you're prudent about that, and you understand what you're spending it on, and I don't think 25% year after year after year after year after year is probably a wise decision.
So do you think it should be capped at more?
I think 25% is acceptable, I just, with that understanding that if we don't get as much from them, or if we spend, you know, full 25% in a year, that perhaps future years we won't be able to, you know, that's...
You could be certain that you checked the balance of that, it could be July first, and the whole next fiscal year, 25% and not anymore. Not going to help keep you on.
I think, I... One of the notes, and you don't have to, was define cause or event. You know, what is, what is... You did some down below, but what is a cause or event? A couple of notes, like if someone comes for educational programs, like direct cross-life guard training, or CPR training, or Narcan training, and wants to use those funds, is that met, does that meet the cause or event definition? Or if someone comes for microphone slash AB equipment at the green, which wasn't covered as part of the project, because it was a pre-existing structure.
Like, say, a cause, project, or event. And I feel like it makes sense to cast within parameters as wide a net as possible, because you want people to apply, and then you can pick the best project amongst them.
So would it make more sense if I came and worked on tweaking this with you, and then brought it back?
It's entirely up to you. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be the only person that causes it not to perform.
No. Well, I think some edits need to be made anyway, and I don't want to drag this out all night, so...
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody else?
Tonight's a good start. No, it's good.
Okay. Then we're going to leave that at that. Thank you, thank you. All righty, moving on. Next item is discussion and possible vote, RE Town Manager Evaluation Process. We did have one addition to the packet that was not sent home with us, I believe. That just explains some things in the process. To my knowledge, what we need to discuss tonight is, it's... We have requirements for who would be involved in the process for evaluation, which would be like the superintendent, but we need to decide other, for other people with it. My paperwork, though. Sorry. And a timeframe, from when we want to get started and have everybody turn theirs in. Springer enclosed, a sample, performance evaluation for each of us to fill out. There's some information on how we conduct the assessments. We were all here for last year, is correct? Right? Yes. Who are you? March? Nope, it was actually before your... It was before your election, I'm sorry. So every year, we're supposed to conduct a 360 evaluation or assessment for Bill. It includes assessments from each of us, one goes to the superintendent, and then we choose, I believe it's four other individuals, I'm going to find one, oh, department heads, sorry. Additional department heads for the board's consideration for inclusion. Last year, I can't remember exactly who we used, I know...
Police, fire, lieutenant, treasure collector.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I would think that we would like to pick different people, or not all the same people at least. And then, maybe I should just read this. Please find a blank evaluation form to review last year's self-assessment. Oh, and Bill does a self-assessment, of course. So discussion points for tonight. When we actually... We would do this ourselves this year, this discussion point would be for next year, Sabrina, yes?
Oh, I would think so.
Yeah, okay.
Make it on a budget and have a conversation about that.
Yeah, it's kind of last minute.
And finally, it could be out if you really need it.
Right. So we talked about how we take care of the process ourselves, or hiring an outside consultant to do the assessments. That would be discussion for next year. And then we solicit assessments from department heads for 2023, or choose new participants, come back, review merits, drawbacks, collecting resident under feedback. And then we select two select board members to review the results and discuss them with the town manager before presenting them in a public meeting. So I guess tonight, we need to pick our four department heads that we would like to send out the assessments to, pick a timeframe for them to be returned, and then... What do we do for a timeframe last... Just, was it a few weeks?
The way your meetings align, going into November, for example, your next meeting is one week from today.
Yeah.
So the sixth is off the table. I'm sorry, the second's off the table, the 16th is right after the holiday.
Yeah.
So going into November, you're looking at November 6th, and November 20th, and the 6th is your tax possibility.
November 20th, is that the week of Thanksgiving?
It's the week before, because Thanksgiving is the 28th.
Okay. So we're looking at the last November meeting, or the first December meeting?
To cover it, if you wanted to, November 20th, which gives you a solid 30 days to get the date determined.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
And then for two members to have a conversation with Bill.
So we'll do 11/20 for the return, right?
11/20 for the agenda posting.
Okay.
So if you did 30 days, you would be looking at... I was going to say, we can take care of the administrative silliness and have it all done by Halloween. Start putting it together into a deposit aggregate, right? Get it out to you, so you guys can start looking at it. The two members who are going to sit with Bill can make that appointment, and you can update any November meeting.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works. Thank you.
So we would also have to have our evaluations done by November 20th?
By Halloween.
By Halloween.
By Halloween, before Halloween.
The agenda item would be 11/20.
Yes. So we would have to have everybody's return by that.
Click all the data into the sheets, get it all to spit back out, get it back out to everybody involved.
Right.
And then you guys would pick two members to sit.
Should we... We need to do that tonight?
You could do it in no hurry. You could push that. But that's your timeline generally, in terms of how it works and how it can be executed. At the earliest, you could do it with the November 6th, and it's not a good meeting for that.
No. No, I'd rather wait. All right, so October meeting, we'll choose our two appointees. November 20th will be our agenda item, everything we return by Halloween. All evaluations back by Halloween. And what was the other thing?
The other department heads.
Yes, so we should probably discuss that at least tonight, have that settled before we leave. Go ahead.
I like a, I like a couple of the recommendations here. I'll throw out a couple other ones, just to kind of keep mixing it up, you know, year after year. Kathy Benvey, library director, and Andy Wondell, Hong Kong administrator, as well, like, those are two other names I'll throw out there.
The thing about the library, though, is that we're not in control of the library, the library trustees are.
Interesting. That's right.
The higher practice, yes, goes up to town manager, correct?
It's, well, actually, the higher practice...
It does not.
The individual poison, budget management is me, but it's a...
It's muddy.
It's very muddy.
Okay.
And anyone else in the...
So it needs to be...
He's not a department head now.
Doesn't have to be a department head?
No, it doesn't.
Does he report directly to you?
Yeah, well...
I don't know that they necessarily have to be department heads all the time.
And I'm not opposing any, I'm just saying...
No, sure, yeah, just have them in the conversation.
It's out of best practice.
I like the idea of water superintendent, Dan Sullivan. I definitely like the idea of Lance Kennedy.
Gene was what I thought, too, as well.
I mean, I, if we're just spitballing, I think Lance Kennedy, Dan Sullivan, Andy Wondell, and Gene Gigliotti. That would be my four recommendations.
Do you have any day-to-day dealings with Andy Wondell?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well...
So, I'm just asking, do you have that realm of reference?
Not as frequently as I do others. Recently, I've had a lot of interaction with Andy, because of Andy's, Andy's, he's the chair of the planning board right now, and he's also the conservation agent. I have a lot of projects going, so I've had that interaction recently, but under normal circumstances, not so much, but...
Yeah, I'd actually change that up personally to Lisa Colony, of our health agent, because day-to-day operation and action that we have with what she does, I think would be pertinent, especially her knowledge of town and what she does. That would be a thorough evaluation.
What are you thinking, Dan?
I'm just wondering, if you're trying to keep it department heads, if there's a reason to do that, or...
I know, well, I was reading...
If it makes sense not to, because a lot of the people that you mentioned are kind of out of Bill's purview. The assessors are in charge of Gene. The board of health is in charge of Lisa. Well, we have the department...
There's still, there's that, there's that mesh.
Yeah.
And it's, but there are other boards that have input into those decisions, so it's challenging.
And all it says is, "Solicited subjective feedback from the town's school superintendent and at least four direct reports of the town manager chosen randomly in a process conducted by town manager and board." So it doesn't necessarily say department heads.
Yeah, but I will say, so if you're looking for people that are going to give a good, honest, insightful review...
Yes.
You know, Andy, Lisa, no question. Gene would be good, too, no question, upstairs, the assessors. The school department, we tapped them last year, the...
She's required in addition.
The public safety chiefs.
Yeah, I'd be concerned about the water superintendent and the community center director, only because they're new.
I think that might be a good reason to pick them, because you have people from the outside, fresh eyes. I think that's actually a feature. At least, that's why I would use that.
And one other thing is, though, whoever we do pick, we have to make sure that they can make an honest and open assessment.
they can make an honest and open assessment.
Yeah.
Because there's a tendency, these, these assessments are made public, so whatever they write and say, whatever we write and say, a public record for the public to view. So there are some people that are intimidated by that.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever we choose needs to make sure that they can overcome that disparity.
I do think we need someone from the finance team. I'm definitely on board with Lance and Dan.
What about the advisory committee?
Director.
Darren.
What do we do?
I feel like employees are.
We've already, well, all right, employees.
People that are elected are at risk of being.
They can't lose their job, they can't lose their position, so they may be more free to give.
True, but do they have the, actually, day-to-day, with the town manager, they don't.
That's a discussion for anybody, yeah.
Yeah.
And he's already getting all five of us.
We're meeting next, we're meeting next week, right?
Yes.
The calendar aligns that way?
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to think about it? It seems like we're.
We could.
I think we should.
Rather than make a hasty decision.
We could table it for next week.
We don't have to, it just seems like we're.
It's going around.
We're just going to throw somebody against the wall if we do it tonight.
Nope. We need to beat it to death tonight. We'll wait for next week, we table it. All right. Here we have, oh, town managers' reports, budget updates.
So I'm going to, are we ready?
We are ready.
We are ready. Going to give the board an update, I'm going to talk about year-end close, I'm going to talk about revenue, I'm going to talk about expenses, and I'm also going to talk about what I see as our fiscal year 2026 challenges moving forward. I'm going to be as brief as I can, I'm not going to give you an hour-long presentation unless, unless you want it, if you do hold on that at a future date. So we have closed our books for 2024, the auditors have been in, they're reviewing the financial data, and they're preparing, preparing the final audit report. So some key takeaways from the revenue side, state aid, I want to talk about that for a minute, because veterans' benefits and exemptions were not paid in FY fiscal 2024. The cherry sheet called for the state to pay us $79,157 for veterans and $104,354 for exemptions. The state did not, they said they did not have the money and did not pay us in fiscal 24. They have since paid us, but it will not be a 24 receipt, so I want you to be aware of that, that, that our 24 cherry sheet will be short those numbers. We received only $54,988. So it's not showstopping, but it's an indication that the state may be stronger financially, which we had presented before, that they weren't meeting their revenue estimates either. So we did meet our revenue estimates, just to be clear. Overall, however, that was one place where we were short. Excise tax did remain strong at $3.3 million, which is $234,000 greater than our estimate. Meal tax exceeded our estimates by $60,890. Good news there, shows that, you know, those two areas are strong, those are two of our bigger areas for local receipts. One major, major note that I want to make, it's a big red flag, planning board, conservation commission, and the zoning board of appeals all missed their estimates. Why is that a red flag? It may indicate that development is slowing. Those boards all do improvement, do approvals for projects that are coming, coming to develop within the town. And the fact that we use past history to develop our revenue estimates is an indication that we're not going to maintain that growth at the same, could be an indication that we're not going to maintain that growth at the same levels. So, so overall, the local receipts did remain strong, you know, we beat estimates there, and both enterprise funds, the solid waste and water, closed with fund balance in the green, which is, which is good news. You know, that's all a positive thing. Overall, revenue estimates were exceeded, I mean, actual revenue exceeded our estimates by $1.8 million. So that's, that's positive, that's a target, that's where we should be. We should always be looking for that, you know, and if, as we get through the budget process, I'll explain why we should. I know I've done it in years past. Expenses, expenses also closed in the green, we were $1.2 million in the green on expenses, which means we didn't exceed our appropriations. Some of the key expense takeaways, overall expenses closed at 97% of appropriation. You typically want to target 95%. The DOR strongly recommends you target 95%. That's an indicator of a tighter expense ratio when compared, and also when compared to previous years. So in the good news sense, the interest rates for short-term borrowing were lower, I'm pleased by that. I don't want to confuse the public, I'm pretty sure the board understands, has all been around long enough to have seen that, that a rate reduction by the Federal Reserve doesn't translate to a rate reduction for municipal government. In fact, actually hurts municipal government somewhat, because some of the interest rates we receive on some of our investments actually go down as a result of that, but our bond, the bond interest rates typically aren't affected by a rate reduction by the Federal Reserve. So I want to make sure that the board understands that. One red flag for us, our solid waste and hauling and tipping costs continue to rise. That is a concern, we have some contracts coming up in future years on both our hauling and tipping, and it just, you know, as, as, there's an indication that our bed for tipping may go away, and we may have to haul to a further location, or do some, some sharing of some other resources. Have some ideas, I'm not going to present those tonight, but I will be presenting as we go through the budget process, some, some ideas and concepts around that. So going to shift now to fiscal year, what I consider some of our fiscal, let me talk about one thing first. Fiscal 25, the actual cherry sheet, which is the budget from the state, we did end up with more than our budget numbers, a lot of that is within the schools, however, we did, they did also increase by $300,000 our charter schools sending tuition, so there's a, there's a big offset there also. So it is a small net increase over our budget, which is a good thing, but it isn't, isn't significant, so I just want to point that out to the board on where we're at. 2026 challenges, as we move into the, the new budget season, we're about to start talking to department heads likely next week about budget and budget process. Some big challenges for us, we already know what our pension costs, the actuarials are out, it's going up 11%. Healthcare costs, with the percentage increase in some ads, it's going up eight and a half, projected to go up eight and a half percent. Insurance costs, at this point, are six and a half percent. In insurance, municipal insurance arena, there's, there's a lot of reevaluation by insurance companies on, as to whether they're going to cover municipal government. A lot of insurance companies have, well, a couple have already walked away, we still have a, you know, good, shouldn't say good, because there's only a couple of them, but we still have some competition within our region, some of the other parts of the country do not. So funding wages, we have several staff comparables of employees that are significantly below our comparables that we're going to need to look at for adjustments, want the board to be aware of it. And all but one of our, our, all but one on the town side of our collective bargaining agreements is up at the end of this fiscal year, so for 26, we're going to be negotiating new contracts there. I'm going to be asking for an executive session to talk about some of the strategies that I intend to employ in the upcoming weeks. School side, they're also, you know, negotiating, the superintendent had a, had a conversation about that. They're not currently negotiating, they anticipate they will be as of October 1st, which is next week. Superintendent and I had a conversation about that, and, and all the unions are looking for big numbers, so it's, it's, it is a challenge across the board on that, so I want the board to be aware of that. And then the final challenges for us to, with all of these aggressive attacks on, on the expenses as a percentage of what I've given you this evening, and I'm not going to include the collective bargaining in that discussion, but the first three certainly are big, high-ticket numbers with large percentage increases. Anytime you go above two and a half percent on your, your expense side, you're eating into that allowable increase on your revenue side. Now, you typically would get your two and a half, two and a half plus new growth, you know, which is three to three and a half percent. If we do see that hit on our growth, I mean, it could be closer to that two and a half percent number. When you're increasing two of your three largest budgets by an average of 10%, there isn't a whole lot left around as we move forward for, for those other, other pieces, so there's going to be tremendous pressure to spend our reserves. Just keep in mind what happens when you do spend our reserves. It is a huge hit on your, your bond rating. You know, the rating agencies, and we do have some debt coming onboard, the rating agencies will certainly look at, at that, they look at reserves, they talk to us about where our reserves at every bond rating call, and we have been really good not to overspend our reserves, and to keep them in place, we need to continue that policy as we move forward into fiscal 26. At that, that's all I have on the budget. Do you want to take budget questions first, or you want to move into a couple of other topics?
I have a question.
Sure.
How, I suppose, you have to kind of exercise judgment with this, whatever you answer with, but how well, no pun intended, how well do our water receipts support our water infrastructure needs?
Fine. In fact, the water commissioners increased rates the other day, and, and the water is in the green, we're, we're, we're fine.
So you feel like the, the rates are appropriate?
Yeah.
Or what, what our infrastructure needs and plans are?
So they are, it's an enterprise fund, so your revenue has to cover your expenses, and you look at that every single year, and you appropriate through water rates the appropriate amount. I will note that I was incredibly surprised when we did the analysis this year, I, I should have brought the numbers with me, I can bring them to the next meeting. We are still one of the lowest, in fact, on the residential side, the majority of our taxpayers are, have, ratepayers, have the first or second lowest average bill of all of our community neighbors. Everybody is above us. When we get into the higher usage, which the Tufton use, none of them are res, well, I can't say that, because legally Pembroke Woods is a residential property, but they're all, you know, Pembroke Woods and the hospital and the ice rink, the golf course, and I have a list, I can share that with you also, the, on the high end, they, they are getting, they are not, they're in the middle of the pack, they are not the lowest of our peer communities, but we are, we're, for what we're providing for a water resource, I mean, we're doing really, really well. And in fact, I'm a little frustrated, I shared this with Sabrina, we are number one on the low end, number one lowest bill, average bill.
Compared to how many towns?
On the low, what, I have 10 on that list, I think? Nine or 10? There's 10, but one of them is us, so it's nine. We are number two on medium use, which is most, everybody in, most everybody in town is below those two numbers. The number one community on medium use is Rockland. And the irony there, that I shared the frustration, is they take all their water out of Pembroke. So.
What about surface water?
I'll, I'll leave it at that, and it is surface water, so it's not as good a quality. I'll leave it at that. It's a point of frustration that, you know, but, you know, they could be kicking some money back to us. Never going to happen, so I don't want to go down that road, it's just, I'll share it. So, anyway, that's, so yes, it has to be that, and we are in the green. So we closed the fund balance, closed in the green.
Or at least let the people know it's shared water system, Abington, Amelac, and two.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is Abington, Rockland, and it is surface water, where we do not use surface water. Ours is, you know, gravel pack, well, water, deep water, much cleaner, much better water quality. So any other questions on budget? Because I have a couple, just a real quick couple of other things. That's okay. Good? All right. Morning, oh, that one's already done, John already said about that. Paving, starting tomorrow, Forest Street, School Street, West Elm Curve, and Oldham Street, going to start tomorrow, they'll go through the weekend into next week likely on a couple of the projects, paving. Fall flushing has begun, water foot, water main flushing. The, there's a tremendous lift, the staff did a great job, tremendous list on our website that shows exactly what name it is being flushed and when, so, you know, check that out if you're curious. And then the final thing is a, a quick call-up for the assessors, exemptions are now available for to apply for, so if you're a senior, a veteran, blind, surviving spouse, or surviving minor child, go ahead and take a look at their website, call them up, talk to them about that, you may be eligible for an exemption. And, you know, if you're eligible, we'd love to give it to you, because we don't want you to have to pay taxes that you don't have to pay. So do, do the due diligence, check out the town's website, and, and talk to the assessors' office on that. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Go ahead, Dan.
On flushing, could you just explain to the public, let the public know that we'll be flushing on the weekends for the first weekend or two?
Yep. So we are going to be flushing in the morning, in mornings and, and at night for the first weekend or two. We're trying to get ahead of that, because it will reduce the impact to certain residences in certain areas of the town, and by doing it upfront real quick, we can reduce that impact, and it won't, the brown water won't extend out through the five or six weeks that we're going to be flushing, so.
And just to further on that, so I talked to the water commissioner, that, that's done for a very logical reason, and once that water starts flowing in the direction of flushing that they're doing, it, it clears up large swaths of the town that have problems. If they did a start and stop, and didn't do it in the first weekend or two, the areas they're going to do it, that'd be detrimental to the whole process. So there's a, there's a reason for it. And he has the overtime already allocated for this, so it's not that this decision is going to cost more money than he had already figured on the program. Those are questions for a resident, too, by the way.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. The only thing I have is, how's the rain tomorrow going to impact the paving?
Depends, it may, I don't, I, I, you know, sometimes they'll pave through it, other times they won't, likely, if it's super, super heavy, they will not be paving.
Okay, good.
You see, update, update.
Yeah. We will be updating.
So when I, when I give out information?
Thank you so much. I don't think people realize, and that was very practical. Thank you.
When are we doing that new innovative paving?
It's this week. It's part of this, that's the school street part.
Is this, so that's tomorrow?
I don't know if they're starting tomorrow.
School is on for tomorrow.
It is on for tomorrow. Okay.
So that, just a certain section, though, right?
It is, from Mattakee's it down to, and I forget the name of the street, but yeah. I'm super excited about that.
I'd like to be there.
So take a look.
So for Mattakee's.
Mattakee's at least, I believe it is.
What's the name of the company?
You would ask. I don't have it on top of my.
That's fine.
I can get it.
Great. Let's move on. When are they paving through? One day, or are they doing it over the course of days?
What, the hot-in-place?
The hot-in-place.
They'll likely try to do it one day, and then they're out in New York.
Correct, it's Friday.
So.
It's Friday?
Yeah. So.
Friday is the school street.
Yes. So, yeah, they're out in New York State, they have a lot of resources here, we're sharing, as I said before, with the town of Halifax, they're, they're doing some hot-in-place at the same time, we actually get a better rate as a result of that, and we will continue to do that in future years if this works out for us, so.
Do we have a third-party testing agency to, to check the product?
So on most of our streets, I, hopefully, we've contracted for that one, I, I don't have an honest answer on that one, but most of our streets, we do, do do intermediate testing on, on the streets, on the, on the roadways, so. It's not third-party, though, we do it in-house, we'll check temperature, compaction, and that, so I don't believe we're hiring a third-party for the streets we're doing now. There was a third-party for Center Street because of all the misses we're having, so.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Bill. Does anybody have any leads on updates? Does anybody have any old business? Or any new business? Was today the fitness court?
It was.
I couldn't go, I had to work. I wanted to go.
I mean, it was absolutely remarkable.
You were there?
Yeah, I was completely blown away.
They are pretty awesome.
I mean, Annie Herman and her presentation, and then the competition between the police and fire.
Did somebody video this, I hope?
I don't know that it was videoed.
Oh, it was, it was remarkable. I officially declared the police and fire competition a tie. It was incredibly challenging.
Oh, I hope somebody videoed this.
Incredibly challenging to, to score it. I wasn't one of the scorers, but the, I, when you look at it, I mean, it was, I can't believe how fit some of those guys are. I mean, it is, it was scary how fit they are.
YouTube, or it didn't happen, Bill?
Right?
Well, I, it happened, there's enough witnesses, so.
Sorry.
I was very impressed, I want to thank everybody who came out, and I certainly want to publicly thank again National Fitness Courts and Blue Cross Blue Shield for, for their helping us, number one, do the planning, number two, with the big grant, and, and, you know, it's just, it's just awesome. If you haven't had an opportunity to get over there, check it out, and, and it's, it's really for all levels, folks. If you haven't had an opportunity, get over there, check it out, and it's, it's really for all levels, folks, we were laughing when they were doing the, the jumps onto the big platforms, some of them were this high, I actually joked, because one of them was six inches, and that was my platform, so. But it is for all levels, so, so take the time, you know, a little bit of fitness every week, they say you can do it in seven, seven minutes a day, or seven minutes, two or three days a week, and you can really improve your fitness, so I want to, you know, call it out, get out there, enjoy it.
American Ninja Warrior.
I know.
Yeah, she won, folks, she won, we have someone from Pembroke who won the, the female portion of American Ninja Warrior, so.
But she's unbelievable.
Yeah, she is unbelievable, so.
Is there anything else on the new business? Any community comment from the board? Any community comment? All right, upcoming issues, October to be decided, update on town-owned parcels, and November 6th at 7:00 PM, tax classification hearing, board of assessors will be present, and that is all we have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just move, just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.